Call the October USD 350 Board of Education meeting in order. Welcome visitors. This may be the biggest crowd we've had. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Yes, President. I move that the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approved the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post the same sign. Motion carried. Consent agenda.
I have nothing unusual to report on the consent agenda. You have two sets of meeting minutes there. Special meeting.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post the same sign. Motion carried. Patron comments?
I have some questions. I don't know if this is the time to do it or if it's...
Okay, relating to a student issue?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Students.
Students, okay. We'll actually go into executive session to discuss that. We can't discuss in open session.
Okay.
If somebody wants to make a motion, we'll just go with us, not Mr. Meyer. And then we can pull them through. Turn it on.
Mr. President, I move the board go into executive session to discuss specific individuals, students.
Student matters, I'm sorry.
Okay. To non-elected personnel exception under KOMA with...
Just the board.
Just the board.
Around five minutes.
To be till 7:07. Return to open session.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the board go into executive session to discuss student matters pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA, but just the board to be included and return at 7:07. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carried. Call the meeting back to order. Business enrollment report.
Just, I'm not going to read all of this to you, but our final enrollment numbers have come in. We have, this will have to be audited, of course, but we're down just a handful of kids, three from last year. So it kind of gives you a breakdown of grade by grade, how many are in each class, and FTE is full-time equivalency. So for instance, our preschool kids only count half, because they're only here half a day. For the most part, all the other students count as one. So for funding purposes, we're down half in FTE, so it's not a huge change historically. If we just look at our kindergarten through 12th grade, it's tough to count preschool in there because it fluctuate depending on whether parents can get their kids to preschool or not. So we're down about as low as we've been K-12. You know, we went back to 11, 12, it was pretty low, 17, 18. And some demographics, the number of students that qualify for free reduced-price lunch is about as low as it's been. Some of that is a function of, everybody eats free lunch now this year. The federal government has allowed that, so there wasn't much of an incentive to fill out the paperwork. We did have a pretty good turnout, but I don't know whether to attribute it to a paperwork issue, people not applying, or if it's, if that's our demographic changes. So it is trending that way anyway, so not a real concern or anything. And then our overall demographics, so free and reduced-price lunch were about 46.5%. This number here is a little bit different than that other one because the kids that are not funded, preschool kids, three-year-old preschool kids, we don't give funding for them, so we don't count them on our enrollment. Students with an IUP were about 23%, and English language learners at 9.2%. Any questions or comments or anything on the enrollment report?
Superintendent evaluation.
So I've included on page 23 the superintendent evaluation tool, just for your reference. I will send out a link for a survey. We'll do that online like we've done in the past. Submit that to Derek by the end of the month.
Yeah.
So I'll get it out this week, if you guys can get that done. Always appreciate honest feedback. This organization needs to improve all the time, and part of that improvement process is my improvement, so any honest feedback I can get, it's appreciated. Bus purchases. We've got bids for buses. This would be a bus to replace one of our route buses that's aging. That one will be moved into a backup bus. There's a chance we may get enough on our routes. We need to run three buses. We run a smaller bus, a suburban, and then a larger bus on our routes. So this is the bus purchasing program through the state. So we just spec out, this is a 53-passenger, similar to the route bus size we have now. It's plenty big enough on those routes. So with all of the options, we didn't go with anything crazy on the options, but some things to make it a little easier to deal with. Midwest Bus Sales is the lowest bid there. That's a Thomas bus. We've got Bluebirds now. Not been real happy with the Bluebird buses. That's Kansas Truck. They deal with the Bluebirds. So I would recommend going with Midwest Bus Sales for $83,161. As far as purchasing this, we would pay off our current lease purchase, our newer activity bus. We've got 40-some thousand, 43,000 left on that to pay off. So pay that off with our capital outlay funds and then start a new lease purchase for this $83,000. So just basically extend it around five years. Need to do that for cash flow. I'm just curious, what does a cost air-conditioned bus? Um, I don't know what, I'm guessing three or four thousand for the rooftop units. We're going to need two of them on there. On a route bus, it's hard to keep them running on those dirt roads. The activity buses, we need them a few months out of the year at least. So definitely when we replace that activity bus, we need to replace good ones air-conditioned.
Any other questions? Got a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the bid to purchase a bus from Midwest Bus Sales for $83,161.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approve the bid to purchase a bus from Midwest Bus Sales for $83,161. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carried.
On that, one thing I should mention, we really needed to get going on this. I've kind of put it off. Our bus is working fine, but steel prices are going to affect the new year of bids, so these bid prices are locked in from the past year. So expecting a 25, 30% increase in prices, so this $83,000 bus to be close to that. Probably be over 100 here in a couple of months. So doing it now is important.
Do we need to do one?
We can't. We do. I can't find a way to afford it with our capital outlay, the way it is right now.
Credit cards.
Just a simple deal here on the credit cards. We've got three right now. Mr. White, Lisa, and myself helps with our online purchases. We do quite a bit of that anymore, and then trips, things like that. Mr. Moritz on the house. We don't want to avoid the normal requisition process. If he wants something for his shop, he needs to requisition it, we approve it. But something like sheetrock or drywall screws or two-by-fours for the house, those are pretty much approved. We need to have those things now. If he's going to go buy a fancy faucet or something, maybe start talking about how much we'll spend, but that would aid the process of him being able to just pick something up when he's in town. So I'd recommend amending our credit card limits for my card at 7,000, Mr. White's at 5, Mrs. Fisher's at 5, and then Mr. Moritz at 2,000. And we would probably take that card back when we're done with the house project. Mr. President, I move the board approve credit card limits as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approved the credit card limits as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carried. Building to order.
We will do that after we're done with all the business, because they don't want to go spittle on. I'll have a couple of things on my report to bring up about that.
Sounds good. Board member activities. Tom?
I don't have any.
Derek?
No.
Nope. Debbie?
Yeah. At the last French light call, we had a presentation by the psychologist. And that was, that was, that and budget was pretty much it. I will say I've been watching some of the activities online, and the quality is a lot better this year.
Okay, thank you, Debbie. I don't have any from either administrative reports.
Mr. White is up running the clock at the football game, so I'll give his report. You guys can talk about anything that's going on that's exciting. So Taylor Clark, Ms. Kansas will be here Wednesday for presentation for fall grades. We've got a guy coming in for an assembly on the social media post, I think 440 post on the 18th. Fall sports is wrapping up. I won't read all of this to you. Junior High League volleyball Saturday, they got second. Junior High will finish up next week. They got one Thursday and then one Monday. This is all done now.
How did they do at regionals?
I do not know. I didn't hear. Veterans Day program on November 11th. Do that nine o'clock in the main gym. If you're interested in coming to that. Mr. White's going to the principal's conference, professional development. It's pretty important. Appreciate you all supporting that. Beginning of the quarters coming up, we have our parent-teacher conferences on the 25th and 26th. Students will be leading those, focused on goals. Anything else? Seniors? Get an extra credit. Seniors get an extra credit tonight.
They have to stay over until after the whole building's here tonight?
Yeah, yes. They see it every day. Still working on that greenhouse. Coming along slowly but surely. Mr. Moritz and I are going to try to knock that out Thursday, get it done. I'll show it to you when we go over, but it's been a slow process trying to get that all completed. Trying to fund Saturdays to do some of that. Our multi-tiered system of supports, that's our time with our elementary where we have So kids that are struggling get the attention they need. They don't fall through the cracks. We can reach others. That'll lead me to this achievement data. I won't, I don't want to go through everything I have here, but I'll show you a few things. I'll put some more in the note, in my Friday note about some of these things, but for tiers, if we look at seventh-grade math, we test them. So kindergarten through eighth grade, we test them three times a year reading math. So when we're talking about our tiers, we've got three kids in the red, tier three, four in the yellow, and 14 in the green. So we've got three kids that are struggling. We need to give them targeted interventions. Hopefully give them where they need to be. So we'll look at that each, fall, winter, and spring, and see how those kids are progressing. Some of those kids that are not performing as well, we will monitor their progress every couple of weeks. Ms. Helfrich is kind of leading that effort, not kind of, she's leading that effort for our NTSS. Anything you want to add on that?
It's slow to get started, but once we get going, it'll be good.
It's kind of a work in progress. It doesn't happen overnight, so. Some other achievement data, state assessment scores. Look as great this past year. So the green is how our district performed. This will be for English language arts, and then the blue is the state. So several grades there were performing lower than the state average, which is not good to see. We haven't put an emphasis on state testing per se. We kind of expected some scores to drop. It's not doing things as normal as we would in a, in a normal year, but making that comparison to the state is also important to look at, important data to look at. And then math, kind of the same trend. Several of the grades are higher. Math is probably is better than English language arts, but that's our focus with our tiered interventions is our reading right now for the most part. Memorize those. I will send them to... We also, our AIMS Web Data, here's what some of that looks like with this kindergarten or first-grade literacy. So there's different areas, auditory vocabulary, nonsense word fluency. You can do several tests for them, and then we look at this data as well, we can see on those tiers. So we've got some concerns there. Just wanted to throw a little bit of that achievement data at you, because that's obviously why we're here, the teaching and learning.
I got questions out of curiosity for either one of you. What has the pandemic done to our numbers? Any idea as far as compared to normal?
It's hard to tell. Last year, when we looked at it, the most significant loss we saw when we canceled school in March and we were at home learning, our biggest loss was kindergarten and first grade reading, lower-level reading, because that's hard to do at home, and how much was it getting done? That's the, that's probably the biggest gap we saw is the lower-level readers, and that's, that's across the board. But last year wasn't as big a deal, just because we were on site most of the year. It was just teachers trying to work with remote learners. We maybe didn't get through 100% of what we would in a normal year. But it wasn't obviously near as bad as being at home for a quarter of the year as the state overall down too. Show us the numbers. We're preparing for that. I'll just carry some information.
Being in school is really important.
It is. It is. The daycare, still working on that, working with the Fire Marshal's office. We'll go over and look at the building on our tour here to take a look. I just needed to find out from the Fire Marshal's office what needs to be done to that building. Is it feasible to use as a daycare? Once we cross that bridge, no, yes, it can be. What needs to be done to it? We may need to do some significant remodeling, playground. Get it ready to go, then we will put out a request for proposals for daycare providers. Let people apply, hey, I want to be a daycare provider in the building. Give us their qualifications and all that. So that would be the next steps. We do have a Stafford County daycare committee that we've started. They're going to help with any fundraising efforts for playground equipment or to get that building ready to go. So hopefully for our school district, it's not a, not a huge cost for us. And then in the future, that committee can help fund raise the efforts for other daycares or in St. John or other communities in our county. There's been a survey going around, and there's, and we didn't need a survey to tell us there's a need, there's a clear need for daycare in our communities. Facilities, we'll go take a look at our air conditioning system since we had an issue with that. Overall HVAC system, since we're looking at maybe using some of that federal funds, that ESER funding for that, the windows. Take a look at the shop. I won't take you up there, but on the football concessions, Mr. and Mrs. Marion Albers have donated $1,000 for that effort to help get something started to hopefully improve that restroom concession area. The idea there is some people have a hard time with navigating that restroom, particularly our older folks. It's been something that's on the list, but they had a particular interest in that, so thank them for their donation and to get that fundraising effort started. Also something to take a look at. KSB convention, the deadline is the 22nd. I know most of you said you can't, can't make it work, but if there is any chance you could make it, let me know. I plan to go. If anybody would like to be a voting delegate, we do have a vote in our association. That's Kansas Association of School Boards. Sean, you are the KSB Government Relations appointed person. If you would like to be the delegate, or if somebody else would like to be, you don't have to go. It can be done virtually. So on November 6th, that's a Saturday of the convention, they do a vote for the president, and then another day in December, they do the legislative priorities, so they vote on that. So, Sean will do that?
Sean for president?
We'll submit your name as a delegate, and then I'll get you that information for your board quick win. Upcoming board meetings, just a reminder, we start at 6 o'clock in November, so four months there, we start at 6 o'clock, so just a reminder on that one. I'll plan to be in here unless we have a reason to move it. Just plan to stay. Talk to your board lawyer. Board election, city, county offices and boards of education is November 2nd. Guys get registered to vote yet? Raise your hand if you got registered to vote. If you're 18, you gotta go get it done. You guys get extra credit for registering to vote too? So advanced voting goes until November 1st at noon, and then the election's at 2:00. Our ESER funding, I have submitted our plan for the federal funds on the ESER 2. We looked at this a little bit last month, but this is specifics. This is on our, so the state Board of Education is approving plans this week. So some of this money has already been spent. So our federal funds are in the hole from last year. We had to have this plan approved before they would distribute funds, so we'll, we'll get those funds and pay back last year's budget on that, which is completely allowed. So additional aids that we've employed last year, this year, and next year. So this ESER 2, we've got about 200, 200,000 for that. Technology, equipment, and software, these two items here from last year, upgraded some equipment for distance learning, online curriculum, those things, so about 30,000 there. New scrubbing machine was about 8,000, and that was last year. Premium pay this year for retention bonus for employees, about 44,000. And then our heating and air control system is about 50,000, so that would help improve indoor air quality, bringing in fresh air. And then our professional development, really just to zero out that, that plan, but we'll always have professional development. That's what we submitted on our ESER 2 plan. We've got another 450 coming for ESER 3. That application just opened here in the last week or two. So we'll have to get more purposeful about that, getting architects involved with the windows and the heating and air system, bids for that, stamp drawings, federal money requires a little more, a little more planning on our capital projects. Any questions on that or anything else on my report?
Okay, thank you. Executive session?
Yeah, we do have, we have an executive session item for personnel. Should be, I'll say 15 minutes.
Mr. President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired or resigning in the performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA, with Mr. Meyer to be included, and we return to open session at 7:51 in this room.
It's been moved and seconded that the board go into executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired or resigning in the performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA, Mr. Meyer to be included, and we return to open session at 7:57 in this, what time did you say?
7:51.
7:51 in this room. All those in favor say aye. Post the same sign. Motion carried. Call the meeting back to order, resignations and contracts.
I do have one. I would recommend that the board approve the resignation of Russell Shields effective December 31st and the settlement agreement that goes along with that.
Certainly, second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the resignation of Russell Shields effective December 31st and the settlement agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carried.
And we will, oh, I guess, future agenda items, we'll have our financial audit report. They're coming out here next week, is that right? So they, I doubt they'll have it put together for the November meeting. It'll probably be the December meeting, but we'll see how that goes. We'll consider my contract and... We'll consider my contract and finish up my evaluation. And then from here, before we adjourn, we'll go take a look at some facilities and adjourn on the fly. Does that work?
Good.
And Debbie, you give me a call, I'll give you a personal tour.
Okay.
All right.
Want to get a motion?
Not yet.
All right.
We'll watch. I guess we don't have to take action to move the meeting.
All right.